And we have funding available.
Is funding was for the EDC?
For what dollar amount?
Uh, don't worry about the dollar.
And is that strictly for the entrance or is it for all of Brad's?
Strictly for the entrance.
I was just curious because there's a lot of lights along Brad'sport that are not working. And well, to be fair, there are a lot of fixtures, light fixtures, uh, light outlets by trees along the ice hole. Beacon that are not utilized. And I'm just thinking it'd be nice to just have that major thoroughfare. Especially for all the citizens that cross down. If we did that work for Alasko and Ebony Lane, because we were concerned about pedestrian traffic there of schoolchildren crossing that path. I can't imagine why they wouldn't do it where the bulk of all the citizens.
That's a very way to have a, uh, some type of, uh, map on our, uh, light issue by the time we have our, uh, strategic plan. Or do you already have that?
A lot of issues throughout the city.
Major thoroughfares in this part right now, but right now, that's just for thought. Right now, we're on the Freeport entrance on Brad'sport Boulevard.
And you got anything else?
That is the writing at that end, at that border, at that entrance. Very good. Thanks, sir. Anything else?
I'll just add that the, uh, reflectors that are on Alasko Bridge and the entrance are really helpful for visibility. And we'll bring that to, uh, the planning.
Number nineteen, open meeting laws, forums, discussion and action. Councilman Finney, Councilman Moriah.
Yep, I was waiting for someone to table it. You know, I want to make sure that, uh, we have an understanding here of what the rule is for open quorum or walking quorums. If I send an email out, and this is a legal question, and I want this on open record. If I, and I want to ask the city attorney, not the code enforcement department, not the parks department, not the mayor, even though I know he's an attorney. I want to know what our city attorney is ruling on this, so we have it on record. If I send an email communicating to the rest of council and the city manager on any particular item, and I, whether I put "do not reply," or if I do not include that language, is that a violation of the open quorum laws? A violation of the open records clause, walking quorums, um, open records, rock and roll quarters, can you please advise? Mr. Duncan.
Okay. Okay, so open meeting law, state law says that, uh, you cannot have a quorum gathered and deliberate on business of the city unless it's an open meeting that has been, um, noticed to the public, so the public has the opportunity to be there and watch all deliberate and discuss the issues and the business of the city. Um, there's a, uh, a specific case that came out where, um, uh, council members were exchanging emails and, uh, they were planning, they were discussing and planning what they were going to do in the meeting and who, what they were going to say when they got there and who they were going to bring in to talk about things. And that was held to be, uh, violating, violating the rule. And that's a common, uh, case that's cited by city attorneys, uh, talking about violating open meetings laws. Now, if you have a conversation which is just, it's not deliberating on the merits of any business for the city, but it's merely a scheduling, right? So let's say you send out an email and say, hey, um, you know, let's talk about when could Jay's, when could y'all attend? Procedural things like that, that does not violate the open meetings, um, statute. If, um, one person sends out information, for example, the city manager before every city meeting sends out a lot of information to all council members on very specific items, the, the packet that we have and has memos and has the city, uh, manager's recommendations, it has documents, documents that they were talking about that need to be presented so the council can review in advance. So if any person, council member, staffer, anyone, sends out informational, uh, email and sends that information to everyone, that does not violate the rule. Now, if you deliberate, so let's say the city manager sends out the packets and instead of waiting to come to the meeting to discuss it, then all the council members start meeting in private, emails, getting on the phone and discussing the issues in this matter for the public, that's a violation. Okay, so the, the, now the problem with all group emails and what makes city attorneys very nervous about all group, uh, emails. So let's say in example, Mr. Keltie or a council member sends out information on a specific item to everybody on council. What makes the city attorney nervous is all it takes is three people to start talking about it, right? And deliberating. So, um, just the, the fact of sending out information, communicating and sending out information, uh, in and of itself does not violate the rule, but the problem is you have to be very disciplined that other council members end up, don't start discussing the money themselves, the information that was sent out, uh, or that email doesn't become a chain email discussion. At that point, that would violate the rule.
Thank you. So a more specific question is if Mr. Keltie sends out a packet and I reply, "Thank you, Mr. Keltie." Is that a violation?
No.
If Mr. Keltie, and I have a couple of scenarios, because these are some of the scenarios that, uh, that have been playing out. And I think that for the most part, the council has been pretty prudent about following these rules. Mr. Keltie sends out a packet, I notice something is wrong, Jerry notices something, Councilman Kane notices something's wrong, Councilman Kane replies back, "Hey, Tim, Mr. Keltie, you forgot to add a press release to that." Now, if a second councilman chimes in and says, "Oh yeah, good call, good catch. We're still okay because we only have two, not three." But if the mayor chimes in, says, "Don't worry, I'm going to make a press release on this," that is when it happens, right?
Right, it requires a quorum deliberation.
So as long as we have less than a quorum, and I think everybody's can understand this simple concept here tonight going forward. I know that when I heard this concept about two years ago, that I never, you know, part of it, it's very easily understandable. I'm not the smartest guy in the room, I know you guys understood it before, I didn't certainly the legalism at all. So I, I'm just asking that we not get unfairly, um, I guess, reprimanded internally or amongst ourselves needlessly when we know what the rule is. And so if you're going to create a walking quorum, that is on you, Councilman Moriah, that is on you, Councilman Bremish, that is on you. Mayor, that is on you, Councilman Kane. But I understand the rules, so I know it's also on me if I violate it. And there hasn't been any violation of my part of the statement, if anybody wants to prove otherwise, I'd like to see that email straight. And so there is no motion per se, except maybe, does everybody agree that we all understand this? If we have to just get it as simple as that, I'd like to, because I'm, uh, I'm of the belief that it's important that we communicate so that there are no surprises, so that when we have some things on the agenda, that there is some understanding of where this is coming from and where we're trying to head it, and it's forward. Thank you, that's all right.
Anybody else? Island twenty, open records request process, discuss some possible action. The process has been, uh, that Betty is the custodian of records and the PIRs in the past have done public information requests have gone to Betty, provided to answer. There was, uh, some discussion and I suggested, uh, with the agreement of, uh, Mr. Keltie, that Mr. Duncan wants, well, when Betty receives, as well as receives a public information request, that we then send it to our attorney to verify that it is proper form, that it is specific enough, it's not vague, there's not anything wrong with it, or it does not require an attorney's general opinion. And that has been the process that we've done for the last, I don't know, Mr. Duncan, year, year and a half? Last process. Councilman Moriah, any questions on that process?
No, sir.
Councilman Finney?
I just want the public to understand that there is an open records request process and to utilize that vehicle to learn more of what is, um, being decided upon in your interest. Thank you.
Mayor. Yes, Mayor.
Melanie Oldham. Uh, yes, just to give an example, I'm still trying to figure out this, how these open records works. Uh, February third, I made a request to the city to simply look at, um, Mr. Duncan's invoices to the city and to the EDC. I waited the ten business days, I got the notice, a letter here that, well, Mr. Duncan was going to send it to the Attorney General's office. And then I waited the forty-five business days and I settled in the heater. Um, so I, I wrote, Chris, I made a public information request regarding your legal invoices to the city. I agreed in February twenty twenty-two, and you said that you had to send my request to the Texas Attorney General. Um, it's been over forty-five days and he said, uh, basically, I have not received a response. And it went back and forth and I have no idea why it took over three months to get this simple request back. And so, you know, I know Mr. Duncan or whoever's EPR, city attorney, gets the right to look over everything and if he feels like somehow, you know, he sends it to the Texas Attorney General. But I had wanted to hopefully have that information, again, just to be a, um, prepared member of the public. And it took over three and a half months. And the only thing that redacted was in any, uh, thing, it said port, port, port. It, it, when, uh, Mr. Duncan did not want it to be known who he talked to at the port. But other than that, I finally, after three and a half months, got the information.
And Melanie, I don't, I don't think Mr. Duncan has to be specific on, on his billing in regards to conversations with that request.
Well, in, in response, I, I do need to, uh, mention that the, uh, I talked to the folks at the Attorney General's office. So the rule is, is that the city provides everything. If there's an exception under law or the city is under law prevented, prohibited from preventing, presenting any document, they, the city can't just withhold it. Uh, they have to get the Attorney General's opinion in every case and have the Attorney General review it and make sure that it fits within the exclusion before it is excluded. The folks at the Attorney General, they have a law that says whenever they get, uh, the request, uh, they're supposed to get a response out within forty-five days. Uh, I just got last week two letters from the Attorney General requesting additional information about requests that were sent in February. And I talked to the folks at the Attorney General, they said they're very backed up, uh, apparently these days. A lot more people are interested in the government and how the government's working. And they're doing a lot more open record requests. They said they're doing eight, they're receiving over eight hundred requests per week. And so they're very backed up, uh, in Austin at the Attorney General's, uh, office. So the, uh, the items that, uh, legally should have been redacted from my billing, the Attorney General reviewed and agreed, uh, that they should be redacted. And so that was the, uh, the reason for the, the primary reason for the delay.
Anything else? Yes, Mayor. And actually, I was fixing to call on you when we were done, okay, I missed you.
Yes. When we're at the council in twenty-three, West End Street. I was really on number eleven. I just wanted first of all, thank you all for doing this, uh, city by China for next, for the weekend, because I have been sending messages to several councilmen, I never got an answer, but thank you so much, we need that. Next, about the open records or mainly the information press release on my chief of police and, uh, the attorney. I think it's a good idea, because even though we still don't know about the city attorney, I know Chief Garbase is already on Facebook, the letter that was sent from the past. But I want to say, Councilman Kane, I was saying about transparency. We paid for an investigation in reference to Mr. Kane and, uh, Bremish. We as taxpayers, they pay, and we are not allowed to get that information. I mean, if they don't want to release that information, then they should reimburse the city for the money that was spent in that investigation.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything else in regards to Island twenty? If not, we'll move on to Island twenty-one, city crash service notices, excuse me, in a Maryways contract, modifications, discuss some possible action. Yeah, I'd like to table Island number twenty-one if there's no supporting documentation.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Keltie, is there any supporting documentation in regards to Island number forty-one? Is provided by Councilman Finney or Councilman, uh, Moriah?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, follow the question, all those who favor the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
No.
Thank you, work session. Councilman Finney, you're up.
Thank you. Where to start? I will say, first and foremost, thanks to everybody coming out here tonight after the Fourth of July weekend. Hope everybody had a chance to come out and see the firework display that was put on by the Lions Club and the EDC in the city. As stated on Saturday, it's the biggest fireworks show in Brazoria County. And it is awesome, and I hope it'll be bigger and better. And so I want to thank also the Stanley Chamber of Commerce for helping to put that on, uh, Gina and the others. We have other events to be, uh, promoting here going forward, and I'm excited for them, especially those that are pronouncing both the river waterfront and the beach. And, uh, if anybody had a chance to go to the beach this weekend, you could tell, you could see that it was very, very well, uh, visited. And I don't think we had any incidents of, uh, beach fires that got out of control, so I appreciate everybody being responsible that way. Uh, Mr. Bobby Joe came up earlier and, uh, he's gone to see if he's all passed on that comment. There's been a couple of comments here from Mr. Julian and also, um, from Miss Alita about these investigations and the results. Uh, it is, uh, my understanding and my expectation that those results will be provided to the public. They were paid for by the tax dollar, the taxpayer money. And, um, I will do everything I can to help make sure that they are in open session and not scheduled in executive session. That is not available today, but when it is available, it'll be my vote that it is provided to the public and that a public, um, announcement is made by council on that same time. Councilman, excuse me, Mr. Rollerson spoke earlier. We will be looking into the, any monies that are owed to any water accounts. I want to, uh, reassure you of that. Miss Oldham stepped in here earlier this evening a couple of times, thank you for participating, Miss Oldham. I have no control over anybody, what, anybody wants to say on their own line, so I can't be held responsible for that. But what I can be held responsible for is trying to be prepared for these meetings. And I can tell you, I, I try my best to get as much information ready. And it's only me, I don't have the city secretary at my disposal, I don't have a city council person at hand or volunteer at my disposal, but I would invite you, Miss Oldham, if you're still out there. If you're interested in helping to put these materials together for the coming council meetings, I would love to invite both you and the rest of Ward A or the rest of Freeport to help me, because it's a lot of work. And I take pride in it, because I take this oath that I took for the city very seriously. That is not grandstanding, sir, in any way, because I believe that you also feel that way. There was a comment by, uh, Miss Morales as well, um, about a vote that happened. It's funny, I get accused of a lot of things, I, I get accused, uh, in the, on the EDC and even on council that I have these brainwashing powers, that I have these telekinetic powers, that I can brainwash people. And it's, it's just not true, I wish it were. The votes to remove Miss Morales were documented, they were voted three to two, there was three councilmen. The councilman that voted to remove Miss Morales was myself, Councilman Morea and Councilman Kane. It should also be noted that Councilman Kane was the liaison to the EDC, so he saw first hand and you will have to trust their judgment and mine as well. As far as the open records request that she had mentioned that she had made and not received, that is not true. See, I, I hear a lot of things on Facebook, the false accusations, but what I don't really try to delve into is this stuff and form on Facebook, unless it's something that I originally pushed. So I will say this, there was an open records request, and guess what? I provided it. It's out there, and another open records request can be made. And you'll know exactly what I noted on my notes that day when I brought it to council's attention and we voted on it. So, Miss Morales, if you're listening tonight, or if you watch this video later, please know that that is out there and you're welcome to it. Miss Kyle, thank you for coming out this evening and, uh, for your kind words about the Moreno family. We're definitely taking that into consideration as we move forward here, deliberating over the, uh, the levy property. To Mr. and Mrs. Ware, I know the, the number of times that you've been out here have been campus, I've lost count. But just know that we're trying to do our best to serve the community, and hopefully we'll have an answer here this evening. Miss Nancy, thank you for coming up this evening as well. We will be heeding your concerns as well going forward as it relates to the fight, uh, your property. There was a comment earlier about VWA and the contracts, and what's the best way to move forward? And I think it was Miss Oldham that said, "Nothing is sinister, nothing sinister is being done." And that is true, she is right. Nothing is being, nothing sinister is being done by VWA, to be clear. But the billing is sinister. And I'm glad, though, that the billing department, the water department, is working to fix and working with the residents to fix. And I'm, and I appreciate the compassion and the cooperation, and I hope that it gets corrected so it doesn't happen again. And I'm glad that we're adding new people, but we have to hold ourselves and these departments and our city accountable. And we will look to do that going forward. Mr. Evans, thank you for coming up this evening and talking about, uh, the water waste. There are other incidents, and if there's anybody else out there in the city of Freeport that can, they can point to and identify any water leaks that are potentially, uh, going to end up on the bill for the city, please let us know. Uh, I'm, uh, hopeful that it'll get rectified sooner than later. Mr. Ray, a lot of the long-term leaks, I hope that one is also ready. I just want to make mention here that I will always speak calmly and slowly, because that is the best way that I can understand myself and also be understood. I haven't been here thirty-five years, but I've lived here long enough. But I've been here long enough to see how sad the public is treated. And I'm hoping I'll change that. I will be calling for a special meeting so that everything that I put on the agenda is in fact spoken about at this table tonight. You can see the subjectivity of some things were spoken about regardless of the fact it was documentation, to that I'm thankful for. But word will get out of everyone's concerns. That you have my commitment to. Thank you.
Councilman Finney? Thank you. Um, first off, we get, we all received this pamphlet of pictures of the jogging trail. Some pretty severe cracks. I want to make sure that we have a program in place to maintain the trail. So I'm giving a nod of the head yes over here. Yes, sir. I want to make sure that we didn't just throw our, throw our money away. Secondly, I am all for councilman putting stuff on the agenda. And I'm all for how we have it set up to where we have a, a, someone seconding it afterwards. Yes, Mr. Finney, you are correct, this is the first time we've gone through this tabling of this stuff. I can honestly say coming into the meeting tonight without talking too much to Bremish, I was of, of the same opinion. I encourage stuff to be put on here, but I also encourage to have some kind of supporting documentation. A lot of the stuff that is on here that we passed up is important stuff that needs to be discussed, but we need to have an opportunity to make a educated decision over what, what is being discussed and not just a vague description. I don't know if we have to change the, whatever it is that we go by, or if we can just say, hey, from now on, this is what I'm going to do. So I will say, the more that I see blank stuff on the agenda, the more I'm going to start either not voting, not discussing, or tabling. That's what I've done. Thanks, sir. Councilman Moriah, board seat.
I just have just assistance complaints, uh, just, uh, general streets. Mr. Finney, uh, I did want to see from you though first if, uh, what was the status on the soccer field lighting? I know we got the generator.
Yes, sir, when I issued the PO to the city, the city has issued PO back. We've sent all the information to the death pill company for our tax forms. So now they send invoice in, the invoice will get paid, then we'll actually pick that generator up and get it installed. I've got two quotes from electricity right now, the third one's supposed to be out tomorrow, now that third quote for electric tie-in. Once that's completed, everything will be wired in, charge the, the lights will come on. We can determine if they have light lights or, or need to be replaced at that point, uh, then we'll get those lights in and get those changed out.
When do you expect the district delivery of that generator?
Uh, as soon as they, they're picking it up right then, so within the next ten days.
Uh, you had said that, uh, the last meeting, that you had only two, two quotes and then the next day you would get a third one.
I had, I heard the third one coming and he changed his light, didn't show up, I had to call another, he'll be here tomorrow.
Do you think we'll have the same conversation the next council meeting?
Well, we should have.
Okay, it, it seems like.
There's a process.
No, yes, I understand that there's a process, but it's the next day, we'll, it'll be, we'll get the third quote the next day. It'll be like ten, twenty council meetings the next day. But, you know, okay, uh, the next thing I want, uh, uh, was, uh, pot holes on Ninth Street, uh, between Dixie and Yopon. I had, uh, mentioned that before, I still get citizens calling me about it. And then, I want, I'm wondering, do you have a status on, uh, the drain? I believe we discussed it on North Avenue M. I was kind of thinking.
Yeah, we've already fixed it.
Oh, it's already fixed, okay, well, thank you. And, and then, uh, on North Avenue M, uh, I'm getting calls from the citizen.
Did you say M or N?
For the drain? Or, uh?
M?
No, the next one.
Okay, for North Avenue M?
N?
Yes. I'm getting, uh, I guess, uh, the citizens there want signs. I, I, I know we discussed this a long time ago, but, uh, they want, uh, they're telling me that the cars are going too fast, either watch for kids playing, or, uh, speed sign. And, uh, in the left, and, uh, on North Avenue Q. And in the left, and on North Avenue Q, between North Avenue Q and Zapata, there's a lot of brush there that the, another citizen I complained about, it's been there for weeks, he's told me. And so, that's, that's pretty much it for words.
And Councilman, Councilman Greenwich, Ward D.
I have nothing.
All right, I just have a couple things. Mr. Keltie, and as I was coming in, I didn't really notice you going out, I was coming in. At Yellowstone and 288, the heat is doing terrible things to the concrete. We already have a major spot out by McDonald's, standing on their behinds, I'm talking about textile. I call them every day, because I'm gonna send a message to our state representative. But they've got to, I know they're not talking about patching it to next year or late in the fall, but they've gotta get some media up now, because those are road hazards.
At Yellowstone?
Yellowstone and 288, Rashford Boulevard. And in addition, I pulled a big old rock stop guy that is up there in 288, Rashford Boulevard, right next to the old West Nonto, next to McDonald's across the tracks. Two major areas that must get fixed, maybe. And also, I wanna actually, it's my understanding that Mary Waste did come down with a picker truck a couple weeks ago.
Yes, sir.
I'd like you to tell them thank you for that, did they charge us for that?
No, sir, they actually picked up all of the explaining his brush around the city, it was less than, I think, seven yards.
And the stuff was picked up, and I went back by, and stuff was immediately put back out. Ultimately, folks, no matter what's said, we have personal responsibility. We have responsibility to you, you pay taxes, no doubt about it, and we have a job to do with that, because ultimately, we have a personal responsibility to them. So, I commend the Mary Waste, I commend those to not immediately put additional stuff out, unless they follow the rules. I think it was a great July 4th weekend, terrible tragedy up north, we have to all be vigilant. And I think we have to just try to have as much civil discourse as we can, local, county, state, and go. Wish you have the air.
I just wanna remind folks of the, the community cleaned up this Saturday night at Oway Fleming. Lineup starts at 7:30, they will actually start making stuff at 8:00 AM until 11:30? Or noon? But I'll stop the line at noon, anybody that promised to get in line that wouldn't be able to. But people can come as often as they need to between that time, and there'll be plenty of help out there to help unload vehicles, and you know, organized. We are allowing, I think, up to three tires, not even over two tires, it will be charged for. We have, we will be taking motor oil at the site. Casey, who's the, who is it that's taking the motor oil from?
Morales, Recycle.
I wanted to recognize them, I will. O'Reilly's, thank you. O'Reilly's will have somebody there to take motor oil, and you can bring construction debris, you can bring wine goods, you can bring all your trash that you have. The half a truck will get picked up, I know it's not, it's an intense, you may commit to your own, but take advantage of that, and we will be getting, have a brief message out probably tomorrow. Remind folks that it is not curbside, that it is at Oway Fleming. But I did wanna thank Councilman Kane for touring Oway Fleming last week. I think I was instructed to meet with the architect, and that's all I have.
Are there any directors who need to make any reports?
I would.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I do want to make it clear to city council that we do have a disconnect process for those people, whether it's residential, whether it's businesses, whether it's a council member. We do have a disconnection process. We do follow that disconnection process unless there is a billing issue that we are working with any resident or any commercial account. If there is a billing discrepancy, that we are trying to figure out why, how, when, what, sending a meter off to be tested. The customer, no matter who they are, will not be charged disconnect fees, late fees, until the billing issue is corrected. But every customer is subject to disconnection in the city. I have threatened to cut off a plant before.
Well, the only, I would say, the only difference is, we do, we do go an extra step to try to contact, make telephone call for commercial properties.
And then, they are.
So, they're not disrupted, but.
If they're not, we send out a notice, and we call if on the disconnect date, if they don't make payment by eight o'clock the next day, they are shut off. We just give them an extra 24 hours, because we do make contact with them. If not, they are shut off at eight o'clock the next day. So, I just wanted council to be aware of what the processes are, because I do take, and my department takes it serious, when we do have customers not coming in.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate you. Very good, at this time, I'd like to.
Is there any other department questions that we might get opposed?
Is there any other department head that needs to make a comment?
I have a couple of questions.
For the department heads?
Yes, sir.
Be brief, sir.
I'll be thorough.
And brief.
An exercise. Soccer fields, the lighting estimates, thank you, Councilman Moriah, for bringing that up. We should, I can be sure, I can see you on those estimates. And there's a couple of other companies that are interested in putting estimates for city work. John Trill, I'll put that on the next agenda, but thanks for any and all maintenance that's provided that. And to your reflectors, that you guys have been putting up, I just wanna reiterate that you can see them now at night, and it rains on the ridge, and I know that Councilman Kane and I have spoken about that, with a non-quorum about how we wanna extend that to all the major thoroughfares, on 2nd Street, Brother Street, Velasco, Gulf Boulevard, and many more. I will say that I'll be sending out that letter to Mr. Keltie regarding the door hanger language. I need to have that drafted up, I'm gonna send it out.
Mr. Fenia, I appreciate your comments, it's true to do, but you're not directing them to the directors, you're just making additional comments, and you already had your comment at the time. I'm sure that's written down. How much more you got, sir?
I have one more.
Go ahead.
Mr. Pepe, on the sand for the beach, it was really thick this weekend. And the Seagull's day at the entrance off of 1495, and also the Crab Row on the side. I'm just wondering, is there any way we can make sure that these those entrances are cleared out so that folks can move in and out from the road to the beach? I'm always very curious at all the holidays, that's not the most accurate area.
I had also mentor-recognized public work staff, I know they were working a lot of hours. How many, how many bags of trash did they take off the beach this weekend?
Over 200 every morning and evening.
Yes.
Or 400, very sunny, I was out there all day, we can hopefully get 287 this morning.
It shows.
But yeah, I have a guy that works the beach five days a week, for his blade, keeping entrances good, and the raking on the beach, and then I have crews that work Saturday morning shifts, Saturday evening shifts, Sunday morning shifts, just maintaining trash. It's pretty difficult, as crowded as our beach has been getting, to get a piece of footman out there, to start moving a lot of things, we have a lot, a lot of traffic on our beach during weekends, and then, you know, people will get out there intentionally, lose their mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Health issues there.
I never understood that, but, that's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? With that, council, this time, I would move that we allow Mr. Keltie and Ms. Wells in executive session. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
There are a second, Councilman Kane. All of those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passed, and answered, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now going to executive session. Executive session regarding a deliberation about real property deed standing itself, legging property, extension straight highway, in accordance with the earnings section of the government currently, section 551, section 551, 07.
Going to executive session, I'll be back out, and see if we take any action afterwards. Be back.